Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 22nd. I have a meeting announcement. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there's limited seating in council chambers due to the number of COVID-19 infections in our area. All meetings will be livestreamed on the city website and the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel, and we'll revisit that this week, that number. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Carroll Smith, President.
Here.
Six Members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Agenda is amended. The next order of business is proclamations. Can we please have Councilman Lavelle and Councilwoman Strasburger escort the Honorable Mayor Gany into the council chambers? And this is the first time he's being escorted into chambers, so thank you. Welcome to council chambers, Mayor and family. Please join us up here. Please join us up here. Just got a photo because it's the first time you've been escorted into chambers as Mayor. Yeah, you can come up here. Ms. Gany, if you want to sit down. An entrance, just like Ed Gany always had. Hugging everybody. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. So it's, as everyone knows, it's Black History Month, and I can't imagine recognizing Black History Month and celebrating it without recognizing our own mayor of the city of Pittsburgh. And so I'm going to present Mayor Gany with a proclamation from all the city council. This is presented on behalf of all city councils, so we'll pass it around after we present it so members can say a few things, but also sign the proclamation. Whereas Mr. Gany grew up in East Liberty and attended Peabody High School. Raised by a single mother, he counted on the support of his extended family and community to build a pathway from high school to college. During this time, he learned about the economic hardships of many families that many families face in our city. And whereas Ed attended Morgan State University in Maryland, where he received a bachelor's degree in business management. While in college, he discovered firsthand that the effective government could be a powerful tool in bringing forth change. Upon returning to Pittsburgh, he was determined to learn about the working community development in order to help those forgotten communities flourish and to take pride in our city. And whereas in 2010, he became the first black man to serve as the chairman of the Pittsburgh City Democratic Committee. He currently serves as Allegheny County Democratic Committee Man in the 12th Ward 10th District. And whereas Mr. Gany has worked on the staffs of two mayors as a community development specialist, where he implemented several initiatives such as business seminars, the 52 Weeks of Peace, and the Minority Media Initiative. He also worked with the Pittsburgh Police Department to improve their hiring practices. And whereas in 2012, he was elected to the 24th Legislative District of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, where his legislative priorities were labor issues, working-class families, transportation, education, community development, and enhancement. And whereas Mayor Ed Gany became the first black elected mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, sworn into office as the 61st Mayor on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. And whereas Ed and his wife Michelle have three children and live in the Lincoln-Lumington neighborhood of Pittsburgh. Together, they have raised their children to understand the importance of being involved in their community. Mayor Gany and Michelle are deeply committed to the city they love and call home. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Mayor Ed Gany for his commitment to strengthening the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of February 2022 to be Mayor Ed Gany Month in the city of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Mayor Gany?
No. If it's okay with everybody, before I speak, I'd like for my mom and my wife to speak.
Well, we got one for your mom.
Oh, you got one for them? Okay, so.
One for your mom. We'll do your wife.
So, I, you want to speak for a second?
Good morning. I was not expecting to speak, but I just thank you. I think Ed has worked tirelessly across the years to learn, to grow, to prepare himself in accordance with what God has laid out before him. So thank you all for your support, and have a great day.
I want to thank Council President. I want to thank council. I appreciate this proclamation and this recognition, but the reality, so I want to thank the city. I couldn't do it without you. You know, it's because of this city I am who I am. It's because of this city that's made me want to be a public servant. It's because of this city that I love that I want to see a city that's created for all. So as much as I'm grateful, I'm also grateful for the city that we all love. Council, I'm grateful for you. This is what community looks like. This is what we talk about when we talk about community. Creating a community where everybody has access to opportunity. Always tell people all the time, if you want to grow a city, always give access. Access is the change of life, and without access, we can't change. But with it, we can create a city where nobody feels they have to leave, but they feel they can stay and be able to raise a family. And that's all that matters at the end of the day. You know, I tell people, get away from these invisible lines and focus on the people in every neighborhood. If you've never been to the South Side, go to the South Side. You've never been to the North Side, go to the North Side. Never been to the South End, go to the South Side. I mean southwest. If you've never been to the West End, go to the West End. And then, you know, if you're from out east, join other people. Just continue to grow. We love this city, and I love working with council, and I love the way that council's embracing me. I appreciate y'all. But to do something that's wonderful means that we uplift everybody, and no one should feel like they don't have opportunity to this region. The more we grow, the more we know, the more we know, the more we prosper, the more we prosper, our children want to stay here. So I'm appreciative for each and every one of you. I've done business with each and every one of you, and I'm thankful for you. I really am. So I just want to say thank you, Madam President, as always. Appreciate all you, and God bless. Godspeed.
And we're going to have a photo with all the members, but first I want to present one more proclamation. Well, the one thing I have to mention is that for a short time, you did live in Oakland, and you have a lot of support in Oakland. People call me all the time talking about how much they support you and how proud they are of you and knowing your mom and your family. So I have to make sure I mention that, but I also want to now present a proclamation to his mother because, as I'm just going to say, we know that how difficult it is raising kids in any day, but being a single mom and raising the first black mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, she deserves some recognition. So could you please come forward? Mrs. Gany. Whereas, Mr. Gany, no, this is Ed Gany's month, sorry. I'm thinking Mr. I apologize. Whereas, in honor of Black History Month, we would like to recognize Darlene F. Gany, Craig, I'm sorry, a Pittsburgh native and Shenley High School alumni who has been serving Allegheny County for over 20 years. And whereas she began her career in 1995 with the city council, right? With the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, and I didn't know that. As an administrative legislative assistant in 1999, Darlene became a forensic investigator with Allegheny County Medical Examiner's Office. She is one of only five African-American females death investigators in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas since 2005, she serves as forensic supervisor, where she oversees 17 forensic investigators and acts as a liaison between all law enforcement, government, and social service agencies. She is committed to ensuring professionalism and the highest level of respect and sensitivity to the families and friends of victims during their time of loss. And whereas, as a forensic supervisor, she made numerous presentations at various local schools and community organizations warning at-risk youth about the trauma and social turmoil resulting from drug trafficking and death due to gun violence. In 2007, Darlene was instrumental in working with Mayor Gany on the 52 Weeks of Peace program implemented by Mayor Luke Ravensall at the time and the Chief of Police Nate Harper. And whereas Darlene is a member of the Mount Eric Baptist Church, she regards her job as a ministry, as she attends to those who are mourning and have endured the greatest sorrow imaginable. She gives thanks to God for giving her the needed strength, courage, and compassion to do His will and for choosing her to be the salt in an environment where not only physical death exists, but spiritual death as well. And whereas Mrs. Craig raised two children, Shade and Ed, in a faith-filled home, Shade is a senior administrative assistant for Deloitte, and Ed became the first black mayor of the city of Pittsburgh. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Darlene Craig for her service to Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of February 2022 to be Darlene F. Craig Month in the city of Pittsburgh. We have a motion to approve in a second? All in favor? Proclamation is approved. I don't know if she remembers, but she's very good friends with my sister and my mother. Wait, sister-in-laws, but from Oakland days. Do you want to say a few words? I want to thank you for raising your family in the way that you did and making them the kind of family that wants to give back to the city of Pittsburgh.
Good morning. I just want to say thank you for such a wonderful tribute to me and my son. It feels good to be recognized, particularly when you don't seek it. So I just want to let you know that I'm appreciative for your gracious consideration of offering a proclamation to me. In regards to my son Ed, yes, I was a single mother, and there's no book to instruct us how to raise our children. And so I was very young, and thank God I had a mom, a loving mother, who cared about her family and wanted the best for us. So without her, I couldn't have been the young mother that I was, and more importantly, God being with me. He ordered my steps, and I remember very early that I had asked Him. I said, "Lord, I need you to help me raise my son." I said, "To get him to college," I said, "because without your help, there's no way I can do this on my own." And so He granted me that, and I thank Him for His grace and His mercy. I've been, as it was read in the proclamation, that I've been, I used to work across the hall. Councilman Saul Udine, I worked for him until, I think, 95. And then I went to the Medical Examiner's Office, and I'll be retiring March 4th, after 22 years. And with that retirement, I will be taking with me many, many, many memories. I didn't have the education or the experience to be at that time a deputy coroner before the coroner's office became the Medical Examiner's Office. But I wanted to do something different rather than administrative work. And so they offered me a job at the coroner's office as a death investigator, and I said, "Oh, no, I can't do that. I don't know anything about it. Can't do it, working around with deceased." But long story short, I accepted the position, and it's been a good run ever since. So I just want to say thank you, thank you very much. And one of the greatest privileges that I have had is to serve the citizens of Allegheny County. And I just want to say thank you again for honoring me. God bless.
We're going to take a photo with council. Do all members want to come forward? Do you want to say, anybody want to say anything? Want to say anything? Good one. Come up for the photo, please. I'm sorry that there's members that can't join us, but they're on Zoom, but I do want to mention that we are joined by Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Burgess online. Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Councilman, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I would like to say some things. You know, I just wanted to recognize the good work that Animal Friends does and how they partner with the city, and they've partnered with the city on this, on the free spay and neuter program since its inception. Last year, they provided spay-neuter surgeries for over 497 animals in the city of Pittsburgh. And I just want to thank the, I just want to talk about the good work that Carol Whaley and her team do. So thanks for letting me have those kind of words.
Thank you, Councilman.
And also I want to thank the co-sponsor, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kraus, did you want to say anything?
You know, just the importance of spay and neuter to animal ownership. So, so, so many unwanted, unloved animals in the world simply because people choose not to spay and neuter their pets and so much. I think, what do we budget a year? Over a million dollars? I think is what we budget a year to destroy animals. Yeah, staggering when you think about it. And something as simple as spay and neuter would stop that, so. Yeah, thanks, Councilman. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you both. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are maybe before city council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please, and I have the first registered speaker as Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oxford, Pitt. Bell Silver, Helena, Montana. Akra, Ghana. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. U.S. Democracy Anchor is, in my view, vote-by-voter verification. Copyright RLM 2020. February is African Intelligence Month. I and the Global Intelligence Society are seeking a link with Akra Ghana. The following polarities all derive from council concerns, like Joyce Carol Oates Contraries. You say no science, information, and intelligence to citizens. So that means the periodic table of the elements, among other things. So what do you know, councilors? Rows 1 and 2, can you name them? No? Hydrogen, helium, lithium, beryllium, boron, carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, and neon. How about alkynes? Alkynes? Alkanes? C subscript N, H subscript 2N plus 2? No? That's methane abstraction, and for butane as well. Public safety questions around these that none of you on 9th February asked. You say you know science, but you do not know science like this man who just was proclaimed for a month here. This is neurotic. You say yay to exclusionary, but you do exclusionary. This is neurotic. Counselor Gross advocates inclusionary housing, yet Counselor Gross affirms the exclusionist Gender Equity Commission and Prototype Pittsburgh. Vector to zero for male involvement in both of those. Up you go with the exercise of citizen speech. "Oh, isn't that really wonderful in public comment? It's a civil thing. We need to listen," Counselor Kraus says on 9th February 22. But down we go with uncivil actions done by councilors. You say one thing, you do another. Counselor Gross is belligerent. Interference with Citizen RLM PC 18 July 2018. Counselor Gross's bellicose participation in Prototype Pittsburgh's post-proclamation racket 1 February 2022. Counselor Gross's non-interference in the Pittsburgh Public Schools post-proclamation raucous eighth grader exit during public comment has no respect for people who are talking, who are citizens. And these people who are supposed to be training our kids. You don't understand that across the city, the Pittsburgh Public Schools has a very, very low reputation. You really need to change this.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and that exhausted our list of registered speakers. Do we have anyone in the audience, Ms. Brown, who would like to address city council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District up at Katy where I wear Irvis tires. I see in the news about the fireman that had filed for discrimination. He was a career fireman and never got promoted. Now, I feel the same way about Kim. Kim may not feel that way, but I feel that you, 20-something years, you got a bachelor's degree, they give you a proclamation from the city, and they hire someone from another state. I myself feel that when they were doing the, looking for a lawyer, I mean, looking for someone for Pittsburgh, it should have been in the state of Pennsylvania only. We spent all that money to go all over the states. I was, my daughter lived down Georgia. I was down there. And they're very backward when they come to some of the laws as I feel about this new one you hired. How come we don't have proclamations? I can, I'm sitting here, and you'll say, you'll name the organization, but sometime I can't really get what the name is to find out. You give no telephone number for these companies. Now, it was a company for women. They're supposed to be open 24 hours in Oakland. They'll help the women to do this and that. You gave no information. What was the name of the place? I'm telling you that all these years, 20 years or more that I've come here, we've always had the proclamations. You're getting so sloppy and messy. You don't have the proclamation. Why not? We're supposed to have it. Now, you have papers they'll bring in, and I asked the paper for the paper. Clerk wouldn't give it to me. I said, "Well, that's, I know you have to go to your supervisor." She wouldn't even let me get the paper. It was Ms. Smith that said I could get it. If you're still getting papers, I want to see the same papers you're getting. I come down here. Yes lazy things won't even come. And when they put you on the TV, you got an excuse. But every one of you should be in here. If I can make it, you should be able to make it too. I am a sick person. I've been to, I've had health problems. And some of that's because of you, because of you treating me like a dog. I'm like a dog. You will chase me out of here for nothing. And the one city worker said, she seen that time, and Mr. Kraus said, "Get out, get out." Put me out. She said, "I couldn't believe." It has to be some way I can stop you from doing it. And your lawyer's sitting here telling you sneaky stuff like, "Okay, say you're going to amend." You're not supposed, you've got your protocols. You're supposed to follow them. If you break the protocol and wait for Ms. Gross to come to be able to take and give the proclamation. Now, when given proclamation, you see her little butt is up there giving the proclamation, but she won't come in here with you to sit here. If we can sit hours, I got sick when I left here the other day because I came back for the afternoon meeting, and that was about the police. You just need to check it. You need to look it up and watch it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. There being no further, there are no further speakers in council chambers nor online. There being no further speakers, that brings us to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
I have new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
New papers.
Thank you, Councilman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize he was on.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 128. Resolution providing for an agreement with CDM Smith for construction inspection and contract administration services for the 30th Street Bridge Preservation Project and providing for payment not to exceed $384,401.24. Bill Number 129, Resolving, Amending Resolution Number 662, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the construction of a pedestrian bridge at Davis Avenue to accept the grant and authorize necessary expenditures. Bill Number 130, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission under the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program funding for the Frankstown Avenue Signal Replacement Project in the amount of $3,322,679. Bill Number 131, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 659. of $3,322,679. Bill Number 131, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 659, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the development of the West End Trolley Trail to accept the grant and authorize necessary expenditures.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 132, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 201, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership of Greater Pittsburgh to Provide Training on the Fair Housing Act to Staff of the City of Pittsburgh, Urban Redevelopment Authority, and/or Housing Authority of the City, and to Private Landlords Operating in Pittsburgh, and to Provide Quarterly Presentations and Technical Assistance on the Fair Housing Act to Staff of the City of Pittsburgh, Urban Redevelopment Authority, and/or Housing Authority of the City, in an amount not to exceed $259,000 to change the funding source for budget years 2022 through 2024 to the CDBG Administration Line Item.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 133, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into an Agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for Administrative Services related to the 2022 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $200,000. Bill Number 134, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the Shared Operation and Administration of the 2022 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,500,000 for the Payment of Costs Thereof.
Madam President.
Councilman Kraus.
May I, if it's the will of council, could I waive the rules on 133 and 134? They're budgeted expenses for summer youth employment. It never hurts to get a head start on, on giving the program up and running.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's student committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 135, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Upgrades by $1,700,000 and Increasing Thirty-Fifth Street Bridge by $1,700,000. Bill Number 136, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget, the 2022 CDBG Program, the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $800,000 and Increasing Thirty-Fifth Street Bridge by $800,000. Bill Number 137, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 713, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement of sale and Smith and Boeing and all document necessary to purchase eighty Wabash Street along with two vacant parcels adjacent thereto for a total amount not to exceed $374,000, which include the purchase price of $344,000 plus up to $30,000 in acquisition costs for the purpose of continued operation of the city's West End Healthy Active Living Center. Bill Number 138, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sales, Item A through C, Twenty-five, Fourteen, Park Hill, Ten, Eighteen, Marina, One Thirty-eight, Wabash. Bill Number 139, Resolution Repelling Items and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, which authorized the sale of property in various wards of the city due to an incompletion of sale, Seventy-one, Ten, Race. Bill Number 140, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale by Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh, Sideyard Programs, Item A and B, Twenty-two, Twenty, Carver, and Seventy-one, Twenty-seven, Race.
Thank you. And Councilwoman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services, Councilwoman Lavelle for Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
I have new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings. I have no new papers. We now move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before city council. Seeing none, we'll move on to our important committee for final action. And Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 122, Report of the Committee on Public Works for February sixteen, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 86, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 303, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 123, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for February sixteenth, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 45, Resolution Providing that the city enter into a memorandum of agreement and/or contracts with the Corporation for National and Community Service for the Purpose of Obtaining AmeriCorps members to work with staff from the city departments on strategic projects and research for ASOM, not to exceed $60,000 over three years for the payment of the costs thereof.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 124, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February sixteenth, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 64, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 886, effective December of twenty-seven of 2021, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget, the 2022 CDBG Program, the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing CDBG Personnel by $64,750 and Increase in CDBG Administration by $64,750.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, we're not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage. We'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 125, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for February sixteenth, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 93, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title Four Public Places and Property Article Eleven, Parks and Playgrounds, Chapter 473, Use Regulations, Section 47303, Traffic.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill Number 93.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to talk about the amendment. Basically, the spirit is the same. The goal is to empower Domi to reduce the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on our park roads. I'll state that, you know, we have roughly two or three, definitely two primary roads that go through our city parks. So those most likely will stay the same. But this effectively empowers Domi to go out and reduce the speed limit to fifteen on all the other ones. So I'm looking forward to reduce speed after they do their evaluation at Riverview. And I want to thank all the co-sponsors, you know, for their efforts as well and their concerns with their own parks. So I want to thank Madam President and Councilwoman Gross. So, thanks. Thank everyone for working together. Also, I want to thank the Law Department and Domi. All of this current amendment, we're closely with the Law Department so that we can come with something that's very effective.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross. Please go continue.
I apologize. My camera doesn't seem to be working today. I've been trying to get my video to start, but it won't start. So I apologize. So I just would like the agenda to reflect that we did join as co-sponsors. The agenda that I have, that I'm reading, does only list Councilman Wilson. So thank you to Councilman Wilson for adding us. But if we could add that to the, to the record also, Madam Clerk. I do want to also remind the good people of Highland Park that have been working on this since honestly before the beginning of 2021. But 2021, when we asked the administration to do the research to see if we could, under state law, lower the speed limit to fifteen miles an hour in parks, that this will has been promised by Domi to be coming to Reservoir Drive as well. And so we look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? I just want to acknowledge Councilman Wilson's willingness to work with council members. And I want to thank he, both he and Councilwoman Gross on their work with this and also your office and the Law Department. It's well overdue, so I'm happy to see it finally happen. I know it's going to benefit parts of my district, but especially Grandview Avenue, which is considered part of the park property. So thank you very much for your work on this. I'm happy to also be added as a co-sponsor to everything. No further discussion? The bill's not ready for, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, we're voting, we voted on the amendment, right?
No, we did not.
Okay. Okay. Can we do, vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill's amended. And now we'll move on to the bill for final action. Any further comment? All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Congratulations, Council. And Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Also, I, I have an amendment that I'll make after the bill is read.
Okay. Oh, I have this. This is Gross.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President.
Do we have the right one? It says Strasburger on here.
Oh, you skipped. Did you skip innovation and performance, Madam President?
Wait.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 127, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for February sixteen, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 59, Resolution Amending Resolution 470, that originally authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Port Authority of Allegheny County, Allegheny County, and the URA concerning the Bus Rapid Transit Project, to now, through an amendment to the aforementioned corporation agreement, authorize appropriations for an amount not to exceed $12,800,000 for use in the Bus Rapid Transit Project, and to authorize certain property transfers, easements, and vacations, dedications, and right-of-ways encroachments with the Port Authority of Allegheny County necessary for completion of the Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Any discussion on the bill?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. If you will call, last week's standing committee meeting, I requested that Domi send over just maps of the lots. There's about four pages of specific parcel numbers in the current draft of the legislation. And so I'll just be adding the attachments that all numbers were sent by Madam Clerk, just to, as attachments to the legislation to appear on legislature so that the, those parcels are all just on visual maps as an additional attachment.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Do we?
We sent them yesterday.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Discussion?
Councilman Kraus.
Do we need to take an action to, I didn't think so, right? No, no action?
So no actions needed. Okay, so the council?
I'm sorry. We'll be amending the bill to add an attachment.
So if I'm, will you permit interrogatory? We don't do verbal amendment on Tuesday. We do written. So do we?
Since we've been working hybrid.
Please.
Councilwoman Gross, let Councilman Kraus make his point, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Gross for her to clarify.
Is this something procedural that we have to waive rules to, to then permit for the attachment? Yes. Okay, so then I will make a motion to waive the rules of council so as to permit the attachment of the maps to Bill 59.
Is that right?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Rules of council are waived. Councilwoman Gross.
Motion to amend.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we did.
Second. You're right.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Bill's amended. Thank you. And now back on to, back to the bill, the amended bill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry. Bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have, the bill having received the legally required number of vote is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I apologize. We missed you a second ago.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 126, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for February sixteenth, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 63, Resolution Amending Resolution 500, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation by exercising the option to extend the terms of the agreement for one year at a cost not to exceed $12,545.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Madam President, just briefly, just to understand the change in amount, that's something we did on Wednesday, and it's just being reflected here today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the passage, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The action. All in favor of the passage with aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Bills have received the legally required number of vote is finally passed. And I have some motions and resolutions. We have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty, council will hold an executive session with the Law Department on Bill Sixty and Sixty One as they pertain to warrants. Tomorrow morning at ten AM, council will hold their standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, tomorrow afternoon at two thirty, council will hold interviews for the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and Asset Management, Director of City Planning, and the members of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. Do we have anything from members? Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you very much. In keeping with the spirit of this being National Spay and Neuter Month, I know, Madam President, you're aware. I'm not sure if all members are aware, but Christine Luffy's Biscuit Bingo is coming up again on Saturday, March the twenty sixth at the IBW Hall. If you've never taken the opportunity to go to Biscuit Bingo, it's just one of the I think this will be my seventeenth year of going, although it is been happening for twenty four now. This will be the twenty fourth annual event. It is one of the the best times you will ever have. They pack the hall. I think there's only six hundred tickets, and they go very, very quickly. But it is at IBW. There are gift baskets by the hundreds that are donated, that are all parts of raffles. Officer Luffy spends her own personal dollars. She puts together all kinds of wonderful gift baskets. I think everybody leaves with some kind of a prize in some way, shape, or form. And there are dozens and dozens and dozens of bingo games. It opens at ten. We start at twelve. I don't think we get other till like four, four thirty. And you're pretty exhausted by the time you're done. But it's a hell of a lot of fun. So if you just Google Biscuit Bingo, Pittsburgh Police, anything you need to know is going to come up, and you'll be able to get your tickets and go. But it's 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 a, you know, it's a labor of love for Officer Luffy. And I think I'm underestimating the amount of monies that she has raised over the years, but I think it exceeds $300,000. That goes all to benefit animal rescues, you know. So if you can go, you know, it's well, you always stop by. You're always there.
I always come, but they let you actually play bingo.
I have to.
I donate, but I've watched.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
It always looks like so much fun. It does. And it is. It's fun just to stop in. And I just want to be clear that council members almost always donate to that bingo. For as long as I've been here, they donate to it and participate in some way to support Officer Luffy's efforts. But so if you haven't done so yet, you might want to let her know that you're going to support it.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Looking forward to coming to see it. Anything else from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the opposite member? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.